Good evening and welcome to the Civic Arts Commission's special meeting. It is Monday, August the 24th, 2023. It is 6:00 P. M. We're currently in the Public Works Department, Rimmelard Room, at 333 Bush Road, Pleasanton. The meeting will be here. Public participation, it is the public wishing to address the Civic Arts Commission's submit card in person at the meeting. When public comment is opened, agenda item, individuals may once per agenda item, you may submit a physical speaker card to the clerk at the meeting. Commissioner Biachi?
Present.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Commissioner Jankola?
Here.
Chair Coleman Knight?
There.
Vice Chair Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Fry?
Present.
Commissioner Yi? Commissioner Mandat. We're getting some kind of a theme there. Is that going to continue?
We got it.
I see. All right. Are there any agenda amendments?
No agenda amendments from staff tonight.
All right, thank you. The meeting is open to the public. Item number one, introductions, words, recognitions, presentations, staff. Do we have anything under agenda item one?
Not tonight.
Okay, thank you. Item two, public comment from the audience regarding items not listed on the agenda. Speakers are encouraged to limit comments to ten minutes. Have we received any speaker cards? So speaker cards tonight? Let's move on to matters for the Commission's review, action, and information. Stand by. Thank you for the participation, Chris.
Yes, thank you. Chair Coleman Knight? Good evening, commissioners. This is a special meeting, as Chair Coleman Knight mentioned earlier. And you'll see there's one item on our agenda tonight that we can engage on. Being that this item requires some extra transcribing along with our minutes taken out at Leah Bishong is the Director of Library and Recreation to join us tonight. She'll be bringing up the letter for, here it is, attachment one on the screen. So first, I'll be presenting on the item, I will go over the staff report, and then we'll present the letter that staff has drafted based on the Commission input at the August 7th meeting. The chair will then call on each commissioner to provide edits and feedback, and Leah will transcribe for us, and we will make edits live here tonight during meetings. Once each commissioner has had ample opportunity to provide input on the letter, a commissioner can motion to approve the letter. And if approved by a majority of the Commission, the chairperson will sign the letter on behalf of the Civic Arts Commission. Once signed, staff will then transmit that letter to the City Council. So I'll now go over the staff report that you have in your packet. At the August 12th Civic Arts Commission meeting, the Commission received a staff report providing an overview of the citywide strategic plan. During the presentation about the strategic plan, staff requested feedback from the Civic Arts Commission, which was intended to be summarized with comments from other commissions and committees, and then provided to the City Council. The Commission shared feedback at the meeting and requested to provide further input in writing on the continuation of a goal from the 2014 Cultural Arts Plan. The Commission requested that staff explore the process to submit a letter to City Council on behalf of the Commission. Staff received guidance from the City Attorney's Office that the chairperson could request for staff to schedule a special meeting for the Commission to collectively act at a public meeting to formalize a letter to the City Council. Commissioners were available for a special meeting, which is why we are here this evening. At this meeting, the Commission will review, provide edits, and vote to approve a letter to the City Council for consideration at the Citywide Strategic Planning Workshop scheduled for August 24th. If approved by a majority of the Commission, the chairperson will sign the letter on behalf of the Commission, and staff will send a letter to City Council. One note I wanted to share that's on the staff report also is that if a member of the Commission is not completely satisfied with the final letter that the Commission would like to send, an individual member may also submit their personal comments on the strategic plan directly to strategicplan@cityofpleasantancca.gov. If a commissioner sends such an individual comment, the commissioner may only use their title as Civic Arts Commissioner for identification purposes, and should be clear in their email that they are sending comments as an individual. So you'll see the letter is up on the screen now in two different places in the room here. And assuming everyone has had a chance to go over the packet and read the letter, the chair will call on each commissioner to provide feedback and edits, and we will go from there.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. So that's our task. Our goal is to draft and finalize the letter to the Citywide Strategic Planning Workshop for August the 24th. Just a reminder, it's in alignment with our duties under the extensive 11 duties that are municipal code. I'll read you the first two, okay? "The Commission shall have the power to, and duty to, A, act in an advisory capacity to the City Council in all matters pertaining to the arts and culture of the city. B, recommend to the City Council the adoption of such ordinances, rules, and regulations as may deem necessary for the administration and preservation of fine arts and performing arts." So here I would like to make sure that we encompass all of the arts. So we're talking about minors, which are the performing arts, which are the literary arts. That's really what our duties include. There are 11 in this particular category, and I think these are the two that probably almost remember that. Or did we say? Now, at the earlier Civic Arts Commission meeting, there was considerable discussion regarding the improvements for the community grant program. And that discussion, I feel, is best handled in the October 11th meeting that we're in with the joint commission with the at that time. Because it's really not in alignment with the workshop of the 24th. And staff has assured me that after the October 11th meeting, there's time to implement our recommended changes for the 2024, 2025 grants, I believe. So we're not inhumored in any way realizing that we couldn't get it done. As we're going through this process, and Rachel has outlined it very well for us, I mean, I have you think about this. Each commissioner should speak specifically how you see we can best meet this need. And that the rest of us are really not going to be involved in a conversation at that time. So I suggest what you might want to do is take notes. What's up? A bit of a salient point comes up, jot it down, okay? Because as each commissioner makes an addition and goes through this, at the end we'll be looking at it. And the intent here is to take a look at the letter, and then add bullet points to it. We have that cable secretary who's going to write his staff report. And then we can make decisions at the end, what we want this final letter to look like. Okay, so we'll encompass, we may have to combine two thoughts together, whatever the edit process is going to be. I think it's best if each person speaks what they think is important, and then we can come back and do something about that at the end. I just, just though, take notes, because there are certain points that are going to come up. You could say, oh yeah, I want to remember that. The letter, we will review all of the ordinance and take a look at it. We'll then finalize the letter with a motion from the Commission. It will be then completed, and I will then sign it tomorrow, and I will be there all six hours of Thursday. Just from 9:00 A. M. to 3:00 P. M. on the 24th to represent you. Are there any questions about the process or where we stand with our next steps? Is everybody okay? Right.
Yes, Sharon, I do need a moment to just confirm what I see. I don't seem to be able to open a document to edit it.
Okay.
I may be doing something properly.
Well, that gives us a little time. Do you want to actually go in some kind of order? I will be last, okay? Is there a specific where you would like to go in? I should just like to move around the room or what? To you. Really, it's kind of up to you, because you're going to think for your own case. I'll start in the chair.
We're doing alphabetical orders. The one comment I had, I'm looking at this bullet point, the city should explore the possibility of public art fee. And does it cover in people's minds visual and fine arts? Or is it just the public art that we talk about, where we see things on the street? Does that make sense, that question? Should that be amended to say?
I think public art is. Public art, but you know what? I think what you are really looking at is how can we clarify that? So it's not, you know, inferred. So go ahead and think of the bullet that you would like to add, specify is that.
Well, maybe, maybe we just added a public art fee for the benefit of the visual and performing arts in the city or something, so that we know that it's not just painting the
Visual.
the utility.
Public art, the term, the phrase, the expertise here, public art is typically not performance art. Correct. Yes, that's correct. I think the common term for public art is.
And the bullet point is based off of the cultural plan that was discussed at the last meeting, and that specifically focuses on public art. So if there was something different that you wanted to see, we can kind of work through that in the letter. But that's what the this particular floor is directly for public art.
Okay. And I think too, to add just a little bit of context and background, this would also support the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance for the piece. So one of the challenges is not just the cost of the public art, whether it be sculpture, mural piece, and the like, it's also, you know, it has to be maintained by a professional art conservator who we have an annual contract with, also damage can be incurred, whether it be from the elements, very rarely intentional damage, but that would also help to support our art vehicles in perpetuity through their intended lifespan.
I think, though, that verification is good one. I know what we're really defining is what is public art to us. Okay, and we are saying that it is inclusive to performing art, that it is inclusive of the mercy, it's included, public art or not. Do we want to broaden that? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I'm suggesting.
That's what I'm thinking, and that's what I thought it was.
Yeah, I think also, you know, right now, like a digital media, you know, if you have a screen show somewhere, it could be a public art too, right?
Just to clarify, this would be very different than what was intended in the cultural arts. So that was, it was intended for public art, the goal specifically.
Right. I think that's a really good point that John brings up, that maybe if we're trying to make this follow the strategic art, civic arts plan, it would be for the visual art and something long lasting too. It's to be enjoyed by all the public, long lasting. Public art can be temporary art installations as well, but we're not referring to performing, performing arts. And again, this was, as I mentioned, directly out of, the whole idea, I think, where we started from was they have a strategic plan, right? The city, we, the city. We had a plan, the cultural arts plan, that is sunsetting. Many of the things in the plan, you know, were not accomplished or were accomplished, it's a mix, it's aged out, we're not going to do a new one. So our job, if I'm wrong, I thought the job was to look at the plan that's sunsetting and pick one, maybe two specific goals from that to make a recommendation that may be included in some form with the strategic plan. This is not a budgeting workshop, so this isn't the time for us to say we want to spend, you know, 2% of this or that on performing arts, or it's specific to the plan, and that's the one that was picked out. If you want to add something from the cultural arts plan, but I think that's the meat that we have to carry over to the strategic plan. I don't think we're going to have as much impact if we just start plucking ideas necessarily. Well, this would be a good idea, this would be a good idea. I mean, I think you could do that on your own, but my opinion is coming from this body. It should be something that was already in writing, that was already agreed to, that was already in our plan, and we want to make sure it gets wrapped in. No, John, your comments are well heard. And it seems that this could lead to a discussion at a later time. But on page 45, the cultural art plan, it says, "Most public art programs took none of the present for art mechanism to provide resources needed for implementation of the programs." And that's on page 45, talks about it as being public. But your comments are well heard, and I think that in a later discussion, we should entertain the point that you're making. But for the sake of this workshop that's coming up, I think we should be in alignment with the language that's already in place, and then we can move along in that area.
I agree. Just, I'd like to add this another comment off the Commissioner Biachi's idea. We are going to be going into a new strategic plan for the Library and Recreation Department, which oversees good parts. And that will be brought to this Commission, and we'll be able to provide feedback and input and suggestions that probably fall more in line with what you're thinking in terms of human arts and expanding it to new ideas. So I think there will be a time and place where we'll have the opportunity as a Commission to
No, that's totally fair. That's totally fair. I just wanted to make sure that that was part of our agenda.
Well said. Thank you. Thank you. Good to think about these things, and that conversation was very worth one. Thank you. Hello, Grace. I think it will add her to our forum. Yes.
As I confirm, do we have any changes or leave language as is?
Commissioner Biachi, what do you want to do? You want any changes to the letter?
No, I understand perfectly why it's worded the way it is. Okay, and that's fine.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks. So that's a good conversation, understanding what really the language is, what the target is for that. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Song?
Yes, I think I agree with the more broad base, you know, and getting to the audience, as you mentioned, in the letter. I think that's more formal in a way. Already there, so I'm glad.
So then you have no additions to the letter?
Yeah, I think, you know, if you are, I think the way to draft the municipal code, right? Those in, I think, in my
From the cultural plan.
Yeah, yeah, I think that might be better, you know, we stick to with it. So like, yeah, we support you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. That Commissioner Jankola?
Well, I don't have too much to say, other than maybe adding, I'm not married to this idea, but adding something about the preservation and sustainability of our public arts, and that this, we're asking for this public art fee because we're using other cities around us as benchmarks, that they have this fee, and it helps to sustain and preserve symbols, something to that effect.
So Commissioner Jankola, would you say perhaps after the the parentheses, that we would adjust sustainability and preservation case? What would be a good spot? To type it in.
Okay. So, was in alignment with goal A, the first, the draft strategic plan. Goal A on the draft strategic plan says funding our future fiscal sustainability. Sounds good. Somebody always say, refer to that.
Refer to that point as a sub-bullet.
Yeah, this is the draft strategic plan that just came out. So that's one way. Is that going to be okay? Yes. I'm just looking for track changes. And everyone can see what we're doing.
Thank you for bearing that in mind.
So it's a minor point. No, it's actually, as I mentioned, it's goal A of the strategic plan that this thing is looking at. And that's fiscal sustainability.
And this is just draft language, please edit.
Fiscal sustainability. Well, let's use their language. Fiscal sustainability.
It doesn't show up on the screen, so I'm looking at that.
So it's showing them both. To ensure fiscal sustainability of a vibrant public art program? Yes, sounds good. Diverse and vibrant. And that actually shows up in the goal D, strategy. Pictures. Let's just focus somewhat more on A. Is that okay? Yes, all right, that works. Commissioner Simmons?
I have a couple of points. First off, I do believe that out of our sunsetting plan, this is probably the most actionable item, so it is the correct one to bring forward. As we have other items that could be actionable, but they're typically CIP projects, so that are expensive. So I think this is something that's easy for them to digest, fairly easy to do, not controversial. So I do think that this is the right one to bring forward. And I always thought we should focus probably on one, maybe two with the mouse. So I think this is very good. I would prefer a little bit more, a little less soft wording. The Civic Arts Commission respectfully provides the following input. I, we are a recommending body, it's in our language, so I would prefer to say recommend recommends the following addition to the strategic plan. I'm not sure if that's the right wording. Something a little, yeah, a little bit. I, the word input and provide, to me, just didn't wasn't really, to me, strong enough, in that we are a recommending body, so I think we should make a recommendation. We are under duties, recommend to the City Council the adoption of such ordinances. So respectfully recommend
Yeah.
the adoption the adoption of of the following ordinance as it relates to the strategic plan, something like that, or something a little bit more juicy.
So there's a few different stages for this consideration, and I wanted to jump in. You probably know this as well from looking at the draft strategic plan, if you know that. And there will also be a library recreation strategic plan for the department, which Rachel referred to. And from that could also cascade some of these things like ordinance. I think at this point, if you look at the rhythm of the strategic plan, you know, and this is really, we're here for you tonight. Our staff is supporting this for our Commission. But I just want you to consider how the recommendation of ordinance really does flow with the citywide strategic plan draft, as you see.
Right, it might be, that's what I'm saying, I just prefer the word recommend. Yeah. Just because that's the language that we use, that's our, that's what we're supposed to be doing. So, yeah, input is fine, as far as I'm concerned. And I believe that those were my comments. Thank you.
This is so minute, but is the verb agreement correct? Is the Civic Arts Commission respectfully recommend or recommends?
Recommend. Well, because we're a body, the Civic Arts Commission is a body in itself. If you were to say the Civic Arts Commissioners, then it would be recommends, but commission is a body in itself. So I think it might be recommend.
This references to a single man.
Right.
For Civic Arts Commission is singular, so respectfully recommend.
They probably aren't going to probably not going to get you in trouble if you put an S on there.
Commissioner Fry? I like that Ann is adding in the fiscal sustainability. Do we need to add something in, and can we, about the acquisition that we wanted? Are we saying
That's what this would be for, is the acquisition of
if we just say
Or I interpreted this as it meant that we're just simply recommending the fee, and how the fee is going to get portioned will happen.
Yeah.
Like whether it's, some cities do it where development goes in, the commercial developer can either pay for their own public art, or a fee goes to the city, so that happens, that gets decided later.
That has to be all in one way.
So definitely.
I think this is just the general.
Yeah.
And is it too much, like, you should have put something in about diversity, or that down the line, and then? Well, on the goals that we're looking at, it's showing up in their previous goals. And that's, there are actually, the document that I just downloaded is A is fiscal sustainability, B is investing in our environment, C is safeguarding our city, public safety, and versus in preparation, E is prioritizing our people. So sprinkle that, and D is building a community where everyone belongs. So that's visibility and community development, sustainability, diversity, it's a, it's okay, not as a it's a point under the overarching. Any other thoughts, Commissioner Fry? Commissioner Mandat, and how did your tennis game go?
Oh, really? It was on, like, the first practice. Oh, yeah, but I don't have any additions, I think the changes we, like, already made, like in a simple letter.
Well, my thoughts, and you can see I've always stuck in this in front of me. I was just looking at the Library and Recreation Strategic Plan for two years, in the next two years. So I understand your comments on that area, but it seemed like a small document, only nine pages long, which I thought, there must be more to that than what I was able to tell. But I'm wondering if there's any value in referring to the cultural plan and giving specifically the image. I'm wondering if that would help in any way? Because it's on page 45, it's 4.2, and you mentioned 4.2, but it reads so well. It says, quote, "Most public art programs took none of the present for art mechanism to provide the resource needed for implementation of the program. This strategy allocates a portion, usually 1% to 2% of capital construction budgets for the Commission of Public Art Works to be integrated into the projects." It goes on to talk about, you know, the value of art, et cetera, everything. So I'm wondering if we and that's important to to want to include it, the wording. Wondering, I'm just reading and thinking about it. I don't think they're gonna be sleeping this with this under their pillow. Say, oh, yeah, that's four point two, I get it now. But it specifically says there that I would like, I'd like to quote that part. And it says here, the strategy allocates a portion, one to two percent of capital construction budgets, blah, blah, blah. And, you know, it's been in this plan since two thousand and ten. Are you seeing it?
Yes, is there a portion that you that you'd like included or included?
I'd like to quote from that piece and because I'd like to really bring it to their attention and quote "Most public art programs took none of, you know, blah, blah, blah." And then go down to saying, you know, you have it in front of you, and this strategy allocates a portion, usually one to two percent of capital construction budgets for the commission of public artworks to be integrated into projects. It goes on to say, but I don't think that we should go this. In reality, unless the art allocation is, well, maybe so. Unless the art allocation is mandated, most often the art elements are value engineered out of the capital budgets for budgetary reasons.
So I would, one thing I would like to mention is the cultural arts plan is from two thousand fourteen. So this statement, um, you know, it does state that they're value engineered. Some of that funding, of course, that goes for the maintenance of the pieces, we, for instance, the city of Pleasanton, it's just simply not true, because this city of Pleasanton uses a professional arts conservatory which that maintains, so they're not truly value engineered or being done by non-professionals. So I almost wonder for the validity of this statement, if this is the right thing to quote. And it's indeed true that one to two percent of capital construction budgets are now currently in twenty twenty-three allocated that way. Maybe it's two to three percent. I just don't know, you know, because this plan is so old.
Well, the plan is very old, but when you talk to Dublin, they have five and a half percent.
Exactly, because that's more contemporary.
We should, uh, sorry, I don't think we should.
We don't wanna bring up
Restrict ourselves to certain percentages personally.
Yes.
I think we need that open, because before the ordinance, if we get far enough, where we get them to commit to planning an ordinance, research is gonna be done.
Definitely.
I don't, I don't, I just don't think we should put in numbers that we we get stopped with.
Is there a different part of that section that you think that would be worth
When we take the first sentence, "Most public art programs took none of the percent for art mechanism to provide resources needed for implementation of the programs here." And that's our first sentence.
Where would you like that?
Would you like to break that up into two? Perhaps ending this sentence with applicable
Right after four point two with the quotation.
Okay.
And just put it correct. Because it's referring to four point two. I mean, this this even goes on to say that, you know, the cultural arts plan says that City of Pleasanton should have added two, two percent for art ordinance. But hopefully they'll go to read this. You know, if nothing else, we're saying most public art programs, none of the percent for art. And we haven't, we haven't been doing a little more, Dublin, Sanremo, and the, you know, people around us have been doing that, you know. You you can only imagine where we would be if that was the case, you know. So I think if we take that first sentence, then we're okay. And your comment is only in terms of the percent.
Yes. Yeah, that's great.
We've got an extra end in there. Public programs. There you go. It's enviable, I, you know, there's no way I want to do just saw this blooming out there.
How does that look?
Yes. Okay. Chair, we also had Did we actually, you said recommend, did we go beyond that point? Was there something else you wanted in there?
We did, I mentioned it, but I think Leah had made some good points, that using the the word input is in line with what it's what we are doing right at this point.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, then implementing, implementation is another step.
I I think, but if you have a suggestion.
No, I just wanted to make sure that
No, I think we decided that in conversation.
No.
Welcome, Commissioner Lee.
I was listening to you the entire time in the car, so I didn't miss anything.
Good, I'm voice impressed. Right on.
I I had a question, though, um, to the, does the council receive this letter electronically or is it in hard?
Question, um, probably both.
Well, I would just want to recommend that where it refers to the two thousand fourteen cultural plan, can you guys hotlink the plan to that?
Sure.
They can just click on it and then go right to it.
And we need an adjustment below.
Yes, yes.
Um, yeah, I mean, I like it's hotlinked, because it's just
Oh, I could put the hot link.
I don't know, the conversation about the saying, you know, being more strong in the beginning of that. Just, you know, recommend and provide, I don't know, I kind of agree with that, that it needs to be stronger, but I get what you're saying about, you know, kind of keeping the language the same, but I just wondered if there's a different word that's still in line, but also feels more directive.
Instead of recommend?
Yeah. You know, I, okay, I think I'd rather see
Request.
Strong, strong rec, instead of respectfully, say strongly recommend.
Nice. That works. It's very intention. We've just talked about But I think it should be in this, because we are one body.
And we're recommend.
Yeah.
I think it's Yeah, we are kind of just put an S in. We'll call it a day.
Speaking in your grammar. Because our this program is reading this.
Just a a question forward to you, Leah.
Yeah.
Because in front of me, the Pleasanton Library Recreation Department Strategic Plan two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-four Implementation Action Plan. And I, you know, there's like nine pages of this, okay? But I wonder if we want if we want, that's, you know, you can have a plan. And if we get it into the municipal code, that's how it's gonna get funded, that's how things are gonna happen, and but out of the strategic workshop, then we move into the next phase according to what the strategic plan looks like is implementation.
That's correct. So you're definitely on the right track. Um, so there's a citywide strategic plan. And then it has very clear goals laid out in the draft, and then the workshop will be discussing those goals. From that comes an implementation action. Right, and those are individual pieces, very similar. In fact, we are using um, the same consultant that we use for the library recreation strategic plan, so staff in library recreation are very familiar with this process. And we've been around the fifth year of our strategic plan. And wrapping it up with a nine-page with an implementation action plan, I, those are very specific for each goal area. Uh, they have, uh, it's it's the connection between the um, the plan and the resources. So it it what brings in the staff, the resources, and all those pieces to make sure, and the and the capital, right? The the facilities and, you know, and all of those elements are the implementation action plan, and that's what we'll be covering.
So since we're under library recreation, and this is the strategic plan for that, okay? How does that fit?
Oh, I see your question, yes.
Yes.
We are closing out your five of that plan, and so we will be developing a new plan. But we we knew that we were, actually, we're timed perfectly, so it's fitting perfectly. This aligns so well, I think Rachel touched on this earlier. And just with the fact that we'll be developing a new library recreation strategic plan as a result of the citywide strategic plan, and aligning with those goals.
One of the disappointing things, looking at this, it says library and it says recreation. Well, civic art is under that umbrella, thanks, sorry. Isn't your line?
In the implementation action plan?
This is, I have in front of me a copy of the Pleasanton Library Recreation Implementation Action Plan. Um, this is March twenty twenty-two. And it's devoted to libraries, devoted to recreation. I read through this, I don't know if I missed something. I saw the names of people that are working, staff members that are working on certain projects and what that project is and that kind of thing. I didn't see any reference to civic art in here.
There is, uh, so there's several things, actually, the Amador Theater Assessment was one of the items on
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah, and the, and then each of those, um, as you'll see, there's many, like in category D, which was um organizational effectiveness and talent management, and that category D, all of those goals apply to all divisions. Civic Arts is a division of library and recreation. And we have human services as a division of library and recreation. So when we say library and recreation, it really alludes to the library and the recreational. As you know, our theaters are a recreational program, and a part of this is um, our human services programs, things like, our senior centers consider recreation as well.
Sure.
So recreation is a very wide bucket, but civic arts is definitely a small part of that. So all of our youth theater programs cascade from our youth pools, so it, they're they're bucketed. And I think that, um, there are some specifics, like we have the Amador Theater.
So I just would say that civics art would like to make sure that they are
We want them
To be closer than here, because I just see library and recreation, even though I read through and I did see the, you know, the new performing portion of it, um, some of the language could be strengthened, I think, to influence civic art.
Agreed, yeah. Well, we, that's why we definitely we could add that to this.
Well, it's not the place, but this is their implementation plan, this is the library and recreation implementation plan, not necessarily the strategic.
Not the one that we will be developing.
This is the foundation, yeah, this is their implementation.
I did one more edit.
Okay.
Um. Where? Let's see, where is it? Okay, the first bullet, the city should explore the possibility of, um, I think it should say explore and implement not the possibility, I'm just exploring, I don't know, like, just doing it. So the explorer could allude to if there were a committee or a group.
Yeah. Yeah, but
Because saying the possibility means, eh, you know, I've trained guys, yeah. We thought about that in two thousand fourteen, and we still don't wanna do it, so.
Get rid of that. Implement or enact, language in this, the cultural arts plan says enact. It means, you know.
I don't know, I I mean, I think implements a little more straightforward.
Okay, got it. Terry Coleman Knight, did you also have an email to share? Pardon me, sorry, also have an email to share? I do, yes. Thank you very much. Chief Harley Rogers, Commissioner Chief Harley Rogers is not able to meet the meeting, she sent me an email, she said, I do think civic art should be given a part for the developers' fees, and it shouldn't be mandatory, exclamation. Please make my comments known that you're meeting on Monday night.
But do you want toward that, uh, the word mandatory in front of public art fee?
Well, if it's an ordinance, it's going to be mandatory.
And there there's going to be some kind of implementation, you know, measures. Right now, we just have language says nay, or strongly encourage, or that kind of thing, and we're saying, uh Yeah, an ordinance would be
Yeah, and then also hotly, the, you know, chapter.
And that's the team point one six.
I keep losing my mouth. So if you see me looking around the room on the two screens, I know it's
Yeah, and I put the title behind it, art in public places. And unit, in the municipal code thirteen point six, but then I would also spell out art in public places, that whole category. Then it's thirteen point six goes from point zero, one, zero, to a number of entries.
So where it says art in public places.
It does review and update as appropriate the arts in public places ordinance. And municipal code is chaptered, by the way, thirteen point one six, and then put in title, but the title was art in public places.
Oh, you wanted after scene municipal code, chapter thirteen point six, and then you want the title?
No, 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 I didn't see it.
Oh, I didn't see it.
I'm right in front of it. I didn't see it.
Would you like us to accept the changes so you can read a clean version and then see if there's a motion?
Sure. Is there any further discussion? I think that's sort of a question with all your eyes that being added to someone. Are you happy with what I'm saying? Grammar, what should we do?
And Jan, you plan to go to the speed, right?
Yes, I'll be there. Yeah, can you accept the changes and then we look at it?
Absolutely.
Please.
So I was wondering, so, um, because we were saying the applicable to both public and private development projects. So that should be okay, right? Because we asked before, whether the art be correct, we might even, you know, some private development.
That's very much in alignment, but they all be a little more
Okay.
Yeah, it's on because the language that we're gonna have. Yeah, and there may be exceptions that they have, they accept this or that, blah, 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 but that's how they stated. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the letter as amended. Do we need a period at the end of the solid bullet point? At the end of that quote? Sorry. No, that's fine, any, when you're, and make a motion that we accept it with any necessary radical changes. Formatting issues that may arise. I was second. And seconds, okay. So we need to call for a voice vote on this, need to vote a vote.
Commissioner Biachi?
I.
Commissioner Sol?
I.
Commissioner Jean-Paula?
I.
Chair Coleman Knight?
I.
Vice Chair Simmons?
I.
Commissioner Fry?
I.
Commissioner Lee?
I.
Commissioner Mandonen? Motion passed.
Motion passed unanimously. Well, thank you, this has been a really, really nice look at, you know, our next steps and access. So, thank you for coming and, um as staff, is there anything else that we want to push forward? I can adjourn the meeting now then? Okay, this meeting is now adjourned.